So in this presentation, I want to really, I'm going to take it as that there's a wide range of understanding of what the workplace parking levy is in the room. And so I want to really look at the kind of the context and for how we came about wanting to introduce a workplace parking levy or to at least consult on introducing a workplace parking levy in Leicester. So that kind of the context within the sphere of the climate emergency, I think, is important thing for us to establish from the outset. And then I want to talk about the progress that we have made in transforming transport in the city, really since Leicester introduced the mayoral system nearly 10 years ago now. Then I want to talk about projects that are currently in the pipeline, what I think are some very exciting interventions that we're looking to introduce over the next 12 months, two years or so. And then I would like to talk about really the need to look at radical ways of sustaining transport improvements in the city beyond 2023, really. So in the manifesto that the city mayor and I were elected on in 2019, we made a pledge to consult on a fair workplace parking levy to be used exclusively to fund a dramatic improvement to the city's transport system. I suppose I've put the emphasis on fair there because we recognize that when you seek to introduce what is essentially a tax, you need to think about the equality impacts of doing that and to ensure that the benefit of any such scheme actually meets the needs of all, particularly those with the least means. Why we'd want to introduce a workplace parking levy or to consider it, there are several reasons, but I guess summarized in this slide. Of course, today we're focusing on really climate and I focus my presentation particularly on climate reasons, but there are other reasons. We have relentless growth planned for the city. We have huge housing need and actually growth, growth can be good, it creates jobs, it creates wellbeing and it creates a vibrancy within communities, but that growth has to be sustainable. And so transport has to contribute towards a strategy of sustainable growth. We know that a workplace parking levy through introducing particularly active travel interventions can support health and wellbeing in the city as well. And also the great benefit to providing better connections within the city, whether that be for work, for leisure or indeed for exercise. Now, before the climate emergency, Leicester was on a trajectory to meet its target of halving its carbon emissions by 2025 from 1990 levels. You can see from the graph in front of you that the progress we were making was great, was fantastic. A lot of that was due to decarbonization of the grid and nothing to do with transport. But in terms of transport, we were maintaining around 25% of emissions being produced by transport, but we were seeking to meet targets. This is pre-climate emergency and we were very pleased with the way things were going. However, obviously, the climate emergency data that came through meant that you can now see what line, what direction that line will need to take if we're going to reach that carbon zero ambition that we have set ourselves for 2030. There's going to have to be quite a big dip in that line. And so radical interventions are required and we see workplace parking levy very much part of that radical intervention and interventions more broadly in transport policy and initiatives. But we know we've got to do more than that. We've got to go to do more in terms of our housing and how our homes function, in terms of waste and resources, in terms of how the economy works and how we function in our employment, in terms of the consumer choices we make, and of course, in terms of land use, green space and development. And people on the call will be very, very aware of the work we're doing in terms of developing our local plan at the moment as well. So our climate emergency strategy is broad and it seeks to radically change that curve so that we hit that carbon zero target by 2030 with that support we need, of course, from national government. But within our climate emergency strategy, we have objectives to support transport interventions that will help to drive down our carbon footprint across the city. So we want to increase the number of journeys made by walking and cycling through improvements to infrastructure and services and through promotion and what you might call behaviour change. We want to work with our bus companies and engage our bus companies so that we can increase the percentage of journeys made by public transport. We want to work with the bus companies to start to introduce those lower emission buses that will support greener mass transit. And we need a plan for this to continue beyond 2023, which is the term of the current climate emergency strategy. Now, those three I've highlighted in yellow there, I've highlighted quite deliberately because that's probably where we feel we can make the most headway in terms of reducing emissions and achieving those other objectives that I've talked about. Beyond that, we do need to expand access to electric vehicles. We know that new electric vehicles are going to be coming on stream very quickly if government and manufacturer targets are achieved. We know that we need to develop opportunities for car sharing and bike share and they must, we feel, help to reduce carbon and air pollution. So a car sharing scheme that doesn't reduce pollution is not an optimum scheme. We need to work with taxi companies and private hire companies. We need to enforce planning policies and to use the tools that we are given within planning to enable us to improve transport networks. We've got concerns about planning policy and where that may be going at a national level, but a part of that to one side for the moment. And we need to address the climate emergency aims in our policies for management of car parking and the highway network. And that kind of opens the door to a workplace parking levy. And we also need to continue access to online services. So actually, no travel is almost becoming a transport policy in itself now too. And I think that's really important and we might talk a little bit about that later. So recent progress, recently I kind of talk about the last 10 years or so. There's been two really big kind of beacon schemes, I suppose, that stand as metaphors to how we have tried in the city to adapt and change to meet those huge challenges that I alluded to earlier, including the climate emergency, but also those ones pertaining to growth and health, et cetera. First one was the demolition of the Belgrade flyover, taking down a flyover that people, many people thought was essential to the highway network and replacing that with a cycle path and footpath and some green space really does stand as a metaphor to our attitude to reducing car use and improving access for cycling and walking. Then we took out a surface level car park and replaced that with a green space as well. People said that the city centre would die if we took out a surface level car park. In fact, what we have seen is a sustaining of city property pre-COVID, just a sustaining of city centre activity that to some degree booked the trend nationally. And that really was an extension of work we've done previously in terms of pedestrianizing the city centre, which I will come on to briefly in a moment. Other work we've done around our air quality action plan, which was really came into being when I first came into my role as lead member for the environment in 2015. Our air quality action plan saw the development of a bus low emission zone in the city, which was the first of its type, a voluntary agreement between a unique range of operators, actually nationally, we're quite unique as a city to have so many bus operators operating in the city. But our bus emission, our low emission zone for buses has supported the improvement in terms of reduction of nitrogen dioxide emissions so that we now have high quality Euro standard buses operating in the city, many because of retrofit, which have been funded through interventions from the local authority. And we've also introduced some radical and not uncontroversial bus priority measures, including the one that runs very close to my home in Ailston. And I've still got the bruises and scars from supporting the A426 bus corridor scheme. But actually, what we've seen now is an increase in patronage, which has booked a trend as well. The bus priority measure you can see on your screen there is actually an exit to St Margaret's Bus Station, looked very simple intervention. What it actually does is improve bus times by up to five minutes, which has, which offers real opportunities for bus operators in terms of the reliability of their services. Connecting Leicester has been a programme of activity that has seen the extensive remodeling of our streets, building on pedestrianization of the city centre and introduction of cycling infrastructure, segregated, safe cycling infrastructure across the city, starting from the city centre, but now we're working out into neighbourhoods. In terms of the city centre, we have the largest pedestrian priority zone in the country, which allows cyclists in as well, which is pretty radical or pretty unique in terms of the national picture. So infrastructure has been really key, both bus and cycling infrastructure in recent history. You can see the Lancaster Road Scheme there, but there are several other schemes around the city that we've introduced, where we've taken space away from the car as well in many, many circumstances. But what I always want to do when I'm doing such presentations is also just give a nod to behaviour change as well, because we often talk about infrastructure work, but we can put in all the infrastructure we want, but if we don't promote behaviour change. Here I illustrate cycling, where we've worked in St Matthews with predominantly Somali Muslim women to encourage and to support their desire actually to take up cycling. We have a range of activities or obviously pre-COVID, we had a range of activities around the city in schools and mass cycle rides and training and what we call doctor bike sessions, where we fix people's old bikes. And that prepares people to use the infrastructure that we're developing. And that kind of marriage of behaviour change and infrastructure work helps to both generate interest initially and then people having the confidence to use that infrastructure. In the pipeline, we have a range of initiatives that are coming through various funding pots. Those people who have been taking their daily exercise and taken some close to the city centre will have seen bike docking stations being introduced into the city centre. So we have the Santander Cycle Scheme that is being tested at the moment by key workers and by other people participating in the pilot. What the cycling scheme will do will help to fulfill another manifesto pledge, which is continuing that work around cycling and encouraging cycling in the city. It will be the UK's largest e-bike share scheme. It will support those health climate emergency and anti-poverty ambitions, of course. There are similar systems in Dundee, Madrid and Miami. And we're looking to launch that late spring. Obviously, there are various determinants, including the pandemic that could delay that, but we think late spring is achievable, all things being well. Further exciting work that, well, I think it's exciting anyway that we're doing is to electrify and extend park and ride in the city. So we're already working on developing a new park and ride site at Beaumont Lees. But sooner than that, 15 electric park and ride buses will be replacing the existing fleet of buses run by Roberts. Now, this to me is the local authority leading by example and really trying to push along those other operators as well to again improve their fleet to zero emission fleet. And so by electrifying our park and ride, we hope that will leverage further investment from operators as well. And we work very closely with the operators through a bus partnership and encourage them regularly in terms of improving their fleet. And there are various barriers to that, but we work very closely and help them to intervene as their fleets are improved. But by bringing in these new electric buses, you know, that will have a market improvement on both nitrogen dioxide emissions and carbon emissions. Not only that, the hospital hopper service will also be converted to electric. So you can start to see a network of zero emissions buses within the city. And then we will be introducing a free city centre link service, which will connect the rail station and the bus stations and provide better accessibility to the city centre for those who might have mobility issues or other disabilities that prevent them from accessing the city centre as well. So there's the added bonus there. So that electric bus network, very close to the city centre, but also going out into, actually into the county and the hospital hopper circular bus will very soon be something that will be visible on the streets of our city. Those on the call will be aware that we are also currently on site with what we believe is the UK's first zero carbon bus station. So that is not only a bus station that will be, that will have all the technology to reduce emissions to zero, but will also have electric charging points for those buses that we want to see come on stream very quickly to. Not only that, there is work there for infrastructure to improve cycling and walking links to the bus station as well, to make that bus station more accessible. So you can now see in terms of bus, something quite exciting emerging before we even talk about what we might be able to do with a workplace parking levy. We're obviously in a stage of much slower recovery than I think anybody anticipated, but the, what the pandemic did enable us to do was to introduce pop-up cycle lanes. And Leicester was the first in the country to introduce a pop-up cycle lane, the first being the key worker corridor, which enabled hospital staff to access the Royal Infirmary primarily when the bus services were cancelled at the beginning of the pandemic. And what we didn't want is people jumping into cars immediately. But we also knew that people might not have access to cars, but what we could do is introduce segregated cycle lane on the Saffron Lane and Ailston Road that will provide that access to the city. Additionally, we also gave away bikes, reconditioned bikes to key workers as well to support that. But what we are now in a phase of doing is looking to make those pop-ups permanent by various different means. Many of this pop-up, 10 miles of pop-up cycle lane that we put in were, we already had plans on paper and funding in many circumstances to deliver fixed schemes, but we also have some additional funding from government to introduce, to make more of those pop-up lanes fixed as well. So that is very much on scheme and officers in the council are looking to deliver those over the coming months. And here is just the Tube map, which got quite a lot of media interest during the pandemic, which also shows how our cycle connectivity is coming forward now. I think people, quite understandably, saw us putting an infrastructure around the city centre and were keen to see that infrastructure work its way out into neighbourhoods. And you can see now from our routes that are developing and growing, that we are working out into those neighbourhoods across the city. But with all those interventions, you know, you'd hope that we'd solved everything. But actually, to be frank, well, especially in terms of carbon emissions, but in terms of other, in terms of other needs, those other needs I've mentioned, to be frank, we have only scratched the surface. And people will have read actually nationally, the amount of funding that is given to sustainable transport and to active travel is nothing compared to that which is given to road building. And we know that much more needs to be done and we, you know, we want to do much more. And so we still are presented with many issues in the city. The number of bus journeys has declined over the last eight years or so. Actually, there's been a small increase over the last couple of years, but nothing that would, you know, nothing that you could say is having any impact in terms of the issues that we're facing. We know that in the city, 25% of all car journeys are under two kilometres, that is walkable or cycleable. And the average trip is only five kilometres, certainly a cycleable trip. We know that half a million people in the city live within a 30-minute bus journey to the city centre. So the city is compact and therefore very accessible by bus. So why doesn't that translate into greater public transport use? And we also know that 150,000 residents live within a 10-minute cycle ride of the city centre. Again, a compact city, you know, surely we should be, with a fair wind, we should be able to get much more active travel in the city. Pre-COVID, data research showed that congestion costs businesses in the city 16.5 million pounds a year, which is obviously going to be a huge concern to the local economy and sustainability of jobs in the city. 0.7 million a year extra passengers at Leicester Railway Station between 2012 and 2020, but that is still nationally underperforming. And we know a lot of the reasons why that might be. And of course, ticket pricing from Leicester Station being one of them, but we need to lobby governments to get fair affairs on our rail, but there are also other interventions that we can support and make as well. 85% of trips taken in Leicester are by car. Given what I've said about how compact the city is, we feel that there's headroom there for us to meet, for us to improve. Middle and Main Line electrification is a priority and a really sticky priority. It's been a priority for far too long and we continue to push governments to electrify the Middle and Main Line, improve journey times and improve carbon footprint. 80% of nitrogen dioxide in Leicester is produced by road transport. And we know that there is very, you know, public perception as well that that is a huge concern. We have made huge headway in terms of nitrogen dioxide emissions, but we still need to do more. And then there's of course PM2.5 emissions as well, which come from transport as well as other sources. But you know, transport is an area that we do need to look at. And the most sticky statistic really is however much we try to create improvements in transport and however radical we are, it always seems to be 25% of emissions come from transport despite some of the most radical interventions we're making coming there. And we'd really like to, we'd really like to improve that figure and accelerate progress. We don't need to accelerate progress, we need to sustain that progress. And one of the issues, I guess, is the very complex funding environment that we currently live in. And, you know, local government across corporately is subject to what one of my colleagues calls tombola funding. Their funders, government and previously, I guess, the EU would offer grant schemes and then you would race for those schemes and there'd be all sorts of reasons why you may or may not achieve funding. Some of those can be who's a particular member of parliament or there could be other wider determinants you don't have much control over. And that, but that huge kind of mix and smorgasbord of funding opportunities makes it much harder for you to achieve your vision because your vision is, I guess, compromised by wider or sometimes competing policy objectives as well. So you have to kind of form your vision around the funding environment that you're given, which creates huge complexity. So much of the work we're doing at the moment, it comes from the Department for Transport's Transforming Cities Programme. And that is of course very welcome funding and is enabling us to do a lot of good, a lot of good work. The Getting Building Fund is a more recent project. The Active Travel Fund is the making permanent of those emergency schemes, the pop-up schemes, et cetera, that we delivered during COVID, the initial COVID lockdown. Then we've got coming forward, the Leveling Up Fund. There's talk of UK Shared Prosperity Fund, which is supposed to replace EU funding. And then there's schemes that we've drawn on in the past, such as the National Productivity Investment Fund, the Joint Air Quality Unit, funding to drive down nitrogen dioxide emissions, ERDF funding that many people will have heard of, Local Access Fund, which supports a lot of our behaviour change work, in particular Clean Bus Technology Fund, OLEF funding, the Office for Low Emission Vehicles funding and the Emergency Active Travel Fund, which funded our initial pop-up schemes as well. So this whole range of funding opportunities where we have to somehow drive our vision through actually creates, you know, creates delay in achieving a vision, let's be frank. And that kind of, that kind of constant bidding for funding also, that takes time and energy as well from delivering schemes too. So what that means is that, you know, you want to look for opportunities to deliver your vision more radically and more quickly. So we can have a funding environment that looks like that or we can have a funding environment where we get our core funding at least from a workplace parking levy. Now, workplace parking levy, people probably know, in the northern hemisphere Nottingham is the only, is the only city currently with a workplace parking levy scheme. And we took a long time looking at Nottingham and its schemes development. We waited for research and evaluation to come out. I actually remember sitting with Friends of the Earth when we launched, we were about to launch our air quality action plan and I was asked about workplace parking levy back in 2015. And I remember specifically saying, we're looking at Nottingham, we want to see the evidence that it's working. And I suppose I've made good on my promise and that I have, I have looked at it and I have looked at the evidence and you're right, it does work. But I think, you know, to have that evidence base was really important for us as a city as we move forward with, you know, with our vision. So workplace parking levy, in short, is a local charging mechanism that charges employers for certain workplace parking places. That is in Nottingham, 10 places we were looking at that at the moment, we can come on to that conversation later. It's up to the employer whether they pass the cost on to the employee or not. Workplace parking levy acts as demand, a demand managed mechanism. So it's as a levy charge encourages, so the levy charge encourages employers to review and manage their own onsite parking so they can create their own demand through using the levy as a tool with which to do that. It encourages or aims to encourage commuters to consider those other modes of transport, mass transit or active travel. And given we're a compact city, as I've said, we think there's lots of opportunity for people to consider other forms of transport. Workplace parking levy is a source of funding for public transport and active travel alternatives to the car. And that is the key thing, I guess, that it's, you know, that it will provide that assurance of ongoing revenue without that, you know, without those, that kind of waiting for opportunities to arise, that is the current kind of modus operandi of drawing down funding to support your transport vision. So why, why we'd want to, just to track back again, why we'd want a workplace parking levy? We need to meet the growth that is, that, you know, that is expected over the next 20 years. We need to manage congestion issues in the city that impact on businesses and productivity. So we want to, we need to sustain and grow good jobs in the city. We want to make sure that we're having as positive an impact on, as possible on people. We want to make sure that we're having as positive an impact as possible on people's health, particularly in terms of obesity and respiratory disease. And we know with COVID, that, you know, the COVID impacts on those people that might be most at risk, that are already suffering from respiratory illness, so improving air quality, you know, could have a positive impact in the future in terms of those other wider health issues that could exacerbate existing problems. And of course, we want to respond to the climate emergency. Before we introduce or even consult on a workplace parking levy, it's beholden on us to have a new local transport plan to demonstrate to government the need and the efficacy of a potential workplace parking levy. So it's all tied up in legislation. We can't unilaterally kind of declare Leicester a workplace parking levy city. We're beholden to legislation and actually a decision by the Secretary of State to allow us to do that. And, you know, there might be people on the call and I'd probably sympathise with them that, you know, that is not necessarily a hoop that, you know, that we should have to jump through in terms of making decisions for the city. So our local transport plan will provide a vision to twenty thirty six. It will focus on climate emergency, air quality, health alongside economic growth. The Workplace Parking Levy will be a key part of the plan. And it will be a key part, obviously, to fund a strategy, building on the investment of the Transforming Cities work that I've alluded to earlier, the bike share, the electrification of the park and ride, the city centre link, hospital hopper, the infrastructure that's currently going in in terms of cycling and walking. And a workplace parking levy will, as I've said, provide a continuous stream of funding, which gives us assurance that our strategy is deliverable at pace to meet the need of the climate emergency and those other challenges. And that regular funding coming through can then be ameliorated by other government funding coming forward. So we're not wholly reliant on government funding coming forward, but we can actually add value to our workplace parking levy funding with other funding schemes. And that's what happened, that's what's happened in Nottingham. They've leveraged a lot of funding on top of their workplace parking levy. The Workplace Parking Levy has enabled them to do that. And what we're doing in terms of the development of our local transport plan is working within what they call the transport hierarchy. So this helps us to prioritise where our interventions will be. So at the bottom of the hierarchy, we have zero emission private vehicles. Electric private vehicles will be a part of future transportation, but they are not optimum, you know, if you replace every car on the street now with an electric car, you still have the congestion issues, you know, that we have today. And you still have pollution from brake wear and from tyre wear as well. So that's, so reducing car use, whether it be electric or traditional, has to be a priority. Shared mobility, so we don't want individuals using cars, we want shared mobility. At the next stage, halfway up that staircase is zero emissions, mass transit has a key role to play in moving people around the city. But you get more bang for your buck, as it were, from active travel. And you obviously get lower emissions from active travel, but you also get those health benefits from active travel. And actually, at the top of that hierarchy, and I think there's a debate to be had here actually, is reducing the need to travel at all. And obviously, as I said earlier, no transport is now coming part of the transport policy toolkit. And we've kind of got used to that a little, haven't we, over the last year or so? And so reducing the need to travel, and actually what that means more than us all staying at home, I think it also means having much more local access to services as well. So reducing the length of travel rather than reducing travel at all supports that. And that means having those better connected communities, that we have better services within communities and of course, jobs within communities as well. So the progress we've made, just checking my watch, I think I've got a few minutes. The progress we've made so far in terms of introducing our workplace parking levy. There's a twenty nineteen pledge that I started with. We have a team established within the local authority that have actually come in from Nottingham. So those that delivered the Nottingham scheme are now supporting us to deliver the background work that needs to be done ahead of a consultation on a Leicester scheme. We're working with the Monfort University, who've produced a study on the suitability of the Workplace Parking Levy for Leicester. And that's actually the same group of people, it's the same, it's the same two people who produced the Nottingham Evaluation as well. So they have, they've looked at Nottingham in great detail and they're now looking at Leicester and the applicability of a scheme in Leicester. The local transport plan, our outline business case, well advanced in terms of its preparation. And we've taken a very explicit decision to have air quality and the climate emergency as a key focus of our work, which is very different from Nottingham. Nottingham was very much around congestion and the economy and actually supporting their tram network. Whereas we are, you know, very focused on air quality and the climate emergency being one of, if not the priority in terms of supporting the delivery of a scheme because of the impact we feel it can have. A lot of stakeholder engagement underway, I guess today is part of that. But we have talked to the Chamber of Commerce, to major employers in the city, to the two universities and talking to environmental groups and others. We need to talk to schools, we need to talk to health partners, other big employers about any concerns and issues they might have around introducing a scheme and what benefits they would like to see from such a scheme. We have to talk to Department for Transport and there are regular conversations with the Department for Transport around the development of a scheme. And we're also talking to those other local authorities nationally, who are at various different stages of looking at a workplace parking levy. So Leicester isn't the only city nationally or the only local authority nationally, looking at opportunity for workplace parking levy. There are others around the country and there is a group that actually, an officer in a city council chairs and talking around the development of workplace parking levies nationally and the slightly different nuanced differences in the proposed schemes coming forward. Of course, one of the big questions is what will the impact of COVID be on the potential for a workplace parking levy? And that is under review and we're looking at various different possibilities of the impact of COVID and what impact that might have on transportation in the city, and that is part of the ongoing work. We have, through the development of the local transport plan, identified three emergent investment priorities, and I've alluded to those as we've been going on, but I'll come to those more specifically in a moment. And we're also preparing to consult, which is a statutory duty, but obviously we wouldn't want to deliver such a transformational proposal without wide-ranging formal consultation, away from the stakeholder engagement that I talked earlier. So very much at the moment about informal engagement, understanding what people's, you know, where people see the opportunities are, but also where people have concerns as well. That needs to then gradually develop into formal consultation, which will take place later this year. So what we see in terms of the vision for delivery of a workplace parking levy is a rapid mass transit network in the city. People say, are you going to deliver a tram? We've done some quite extensive work using real expertise and we feel that a rapid mass transit network that almost mimics a tram style system using buses, similar to the ones you can see on your screen that look a bit like trams, will actually give us that speed of implementation. Trams take a very long time to introduce, very, very costly. But a rapid cross-city mass transit network of buses will, we think will enable us to radically increase patronage. We have very limited opportunities to go across the city at the moment, so very few services do that. And then from there, we would obviously look at potentially radial routes further down the line, so going round the city as well as into the city. Looking at rail station transformation, so to make our railway station a destination, actually. So people have seen what's happened in Birmingham. We want to, where we have leverage and opportunity to influence rail, obviously lobbying for the electrification of the Middle and Mainline, creating better accessibility from the railway station to other parts of the city and the city centre, but also making the railway station somewhere where people want to be and see as part of a positive journey is something that we see as really key, we see it as really key for the economy as well as for the environment too. So that would obviously take more use of rail, will obviously take more traffic off our roads. And thirdly, we want active travel everywhere. So we want connected, healthy neighbourhoods. We want people to be able to feel they can walk or cycle safely, you know, across the city and between communities and locally as well. And I think one thing that we have learnt from COVID nineteen is that if we do create safe environments for cycling and walking, then people will use those, you use those opportunities. And so if we're able to create active travel everywhere, we will be able to drastically reduce emissions and improve people's own personal health. The time scales that we're working to at the moment. So we're looking to consult on the draft local transport plan late spring and into the summer with the outline proposals that I've alluded to in today's presentation. Then we will have a formal consultation on the Workplace Parking Levy in the winter of this year. Next year, we will submit a business case to the Secretary of State and then we sit back and wait. We don't know how long the Secretary of State will take to consider our proposals. That is, you know, a potential, you know, barrier to implementation. And we would hope to have a workplace parking levy operation on the city and bring those benefits that I hope I've outlined relatively coherently in twenty twenty three. And that just about concludes what I had to say in terms of my presentation, Richard and everybody. I am happy to take any questions.
Thanks very much, Adam. I found that very interesting, being a bit of a transport nerd and not knowing that much about the detail of Leicester. Yeah, fascinating, some really interesting projects there. We have got now about ten minutes left and we've got more than ten questions. So already waiting in the chat box, so you're going to have to be pretty prompt with your questions. Feel free to actually ask them in person or if you're happy for me to read them out, I might save this time. So I'm going to go to them in order and invite you to speak if you want to. But if you don't, then I'll just read them out for you. So the first one was for Max Lewis. What is the council doing about bike shelters in residential areas, which we need? I'm praising it there.
Yeah, absolutely. We have, cycle storage generally in the city is a recognised issue. You know, people do need to feel they have somewhere safe to store their bikes. And we are looking at bike hangars, which we do have some in communities at the moment. But the wider introduction of bike hangars and looking to talk to communities themselves about where they would like to see improved storage. There's some really nifty products on the market, including bike storage that look like kind of perimeter walls as well, where you can actually store bikes in toast housing there. So we are very much kind of actively talking about that as well. But obviously, we're also looking at those communities that would welcome bike share docking stations as well as the kind of the entry vehicle for people who want to take up regular cycling as well. But you're absolutely right, cycle security, as somebody who's had more than one cycle stolen in my life, cycle security is really key to, you know, to have an effective cycling around the city.
Thanks for that. Yeah, I just had a bike stolen as well, so I know how it feels. Sorry, I'm going to take an exact decision and ask the questions myself just because we're so short of time. Sorry about that, folks. So that partly answers Sue's question as well, I think.
So just on the city centre storage, we are looking at kind of key car twenty four access opportunities for city centre bike storage.
Great, thank you. There's a question about the park and ride opening times from Ursula Bilson. They don't open past five PM, which can cause problems if people want to do things in the evening in the city.
So I think it's seven PM in normal times and a lot of that is, the park and ride is currently heavily subsidised by the two local authorities, half a million pounds subsidy. And in terms of the cost of going beyond those times and the usage, we did a study with a local company that does research into this a couple of years ago. And the cost was seen as prohibitive, of course. Workplace Parking Levy may offer greater opportunities to expand park and ride times.
Thank you. And there's a couple of questions about plans. One on bus and cycle routes planned and one on the the permanent pop-up cycle routes. Is there a plan available? So I'll lump those together if I could.
In terms of a kind of a map or?
Yeah, the first question is, sorry, is a plan available of the permanent pop-up cycle lanes? And the second question was orbital bus and cycle routes planned? Are there any planned?
So in terms of the Active Travel Fund pop-up cycle routes being made permanent, they're actually in development at the moment. So looking at those schemes, they're kind of coming through the system for decisions to be made on where they'll be made permanent. And then from there, you saw the Tube map that I put up on the screen earlier. We will be, we'll be kind of amending that there. But most of the schemes, if not all of them, except for those that are in bus lanes. And I can see there's a question around that as well. There are some elements where there are pop-up cycle lanes that take bus lanes. They, you know, we will probably look to prioritise buses there, but look at alternative opportunities for those. Orbital route, yes, absolutely. Often those come along with development. So in terms of section one oh six contributions, the development often allows us to do that. But obviously with Workplace Parking Levy, that would support the development of further infrastructure or could, depending on outcomes of consultations, support the development of further infrastructure on orbital routes as well. And you can see some of that starting to emerge, particularly around the Glenfield Hospital.
Thank you. Someone's asked about bus fares, they're quite expensive and could there be opportunities with bringing them down broadly is the question?
Yeah, well, that is the stickiest, yeah, the cost of reliability of buses is really important in terms of getting bus use. But obviously fares is really important as well as cleanliness as buses is. But fares is the stickiest one for a local authority. And Workplace Parking Levy will help to drive up efficiency of buses, which we hope would bring down fares. But of course, we're always looking at opportunities to provide better access to transport for those who might have the least means. Our bike share scheme, we're actually going to have some real opportunities for free use in some circumstances for bike share. And of course, our city centre bus link, we're looking to be free as well. So, but yeah, we do need to do everything we can to reduce fares to make transport more accessible, particularly for job seekers and students etcetera.
Yeah, there's a link question to that where we're sort of running short of time, apologies folks, about a possible partnership agreement with bus operators. I know this has been looked at at other cities in the country as well.
So we have one, yeah, so that is in place at the moment. You know, so the Leicester Bus Partnership exists, there are terms of reference, there are voting rights, there are. You know, so the Leicester Bus Partnership exists, there are terms of reference, there are voting rights, there are, and and that, and that's, so, so, so that does exist born out of the, the, the Bus Services Act. And that's developing in line. And that's where we're talking to them about workplace parking levy opportunities as well. Because obviously the bus operators are keen that, you know, that their, their operations aren't impeded on by, by improvements that we're able to put in. And they support the wider bus network.
So thanks very much for coming today. That's, it's been really interesting, I think. And obviously a lot, a lot of questions generated there. And unfortunately, didn't have time to deal with them all properly. So apologies again for that.